All right, the zoning board meeting of January 21st, 2020 will come to order. Clark and Paul, roll please.
Mr. McQuarrie?
President.
Mr. Wood?
President.
Mrs. Crowley?
President.
Mr. Cowan?
President.
Mr. Trusson, Bassett, and Mr. Colton?
President. So the first order of business will be a motion to accept the minutes of the January 7th.
Motion to accept this, right?
So I got a, I got a, I got a motion and a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed? First case tonight is case number 9925, 243, 245 Parkland Avenue. Petition of Phil Branzi by his attorney Lisa McGloin.
Who Lisa's in the building, she prepared a management.
To allow construction of a four-unit attached structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the R2 district with less than the required frontage. So basically, the two, the two variances is for the frontage and also you've got an R2 lot, which normally means you can only build a two-family house on an R2 lot. So you're looking to double that and put four units on that lot?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to, the hearing is now open for those in favor. Phil, do you want to, do you want to, you want to speak or what?
Can I just wait for Lisa? But I mean, it's a huge lot and we're putting, you know.
If you want to wait for Lisa, then we'll, all right. So we will temporarily put this on hold. We'll suspend this for now. We have another, two other cases that the attorney is not here at this point as well. So we could be, we might be out of here early tonight.
Okay, she is now. Here's Lisa.
You ready, Lisa, or you want to, you ready to go? Okay. All right, so we're not going to suspend it after a while. We're ready to go.
Good evening, members of the board. I represent Phil Branzi. We're reporting here today with respect to 243, 245 Parkland Avenue. And then, Mr. Branzi is seeking to do a four-unit condominium, which is laid out in the plans. Prior, previously, the past history of this property, there were two single families on the property. One of those single families was much closer to the lot line than previously existed. As you can see, it's almost a 22,000 square foot lot, which is a very large lot for that area on Parkland Avenue. And to the right where it says Denise Livingstone, 235 Parkland Ave., one of the two houses was very close to her property prior to Mr. Branzi obtaining the property and trying to fix up and modify the property. He's seeking to put four two-bedroom condominiums on the property, each with one and a half baths. There are, originally, he had this for parking underneath each unit. He had two, two neighborhood meetings with the neighbors. At one of those, one of the owners, I believe it was Mr. Scanlon, who's one of the neighbors, indicated that he'd really like to see the garages not underneath and to try and keep the height of the building lower so that it was a little bit more in conformity with some of the other single-family residences in the, in the neighborhood. There is also another multifamily not too far away on Parkland Avenue down the corner at the lights, which has, I think, eight units or 12 units in that. So it's not uncharacteristic to do this in that neighborhood and not more than a single family in the neighborhood. Reducing and taking the cars out of the garage reduces the overall height of the building, I believe, to 29?
28.6.
28.6. So it is under 35 feet. So basically, we're looking to try and do the four-unit condominium on this lot of land. And as I said, it has 10 units on the property for parking. And I'm happy to address any questions the board may have regarding this project.
Exactly, yes.
Townhouses, yes. They would be next to each other. Each would be an individual unit with three floors, basically a finished bottom floor, which is partially below ground, a main floor and the first floor, and then a second floor unit.
Would you, would you want to say something about how careful if you were doing it? Would you want to be careful to make sure things blend well?
We, we really want it to blend well. I think the look of it helps with that.
What I'm saying is, there's no townhouses in that area.
There's the apartment buildings.
That's not a commercial piece of property.
Okay, this is going to, okay. And I know there's some down the other end of the street as well.
Well, you need six parking spaces. I only have four showing here.
There's 10. All those lines are technically parking spots. They're just, they're not cars in the each spot, but each one of those lines right there with the cars next to it, there's a spot for a car. It's the same width all the way across.
Can you hold that up, Lisa, so we can see what's on there?
So there's a car here, and then there's a space, and then a car, and then a space, and then a car, and then a space. And then the same thing on the other side. So there's actually room for 10 cars.
It's not staked either.
Mr. Reed has not staked this?
No.
No.
Okay. Which will be difficult.
Did you see the application? Tell me if I'm pretty good.
Okay. I'm happy to ask Mr. Reed to stake this, if the board would like that done.
I think that's what you say, is despite. That's how it is going, and so forth. We don't know where this is. We don't know how to park it. You're saying in fact, very fast, that I don't see a certified parking lot.
There's a site plan that shows the parking on it.
I know what you said, maybe you could park many times.
Well, there's a car, and then there's another spot for a car, and then a car, and a spot for a car. The actual cars are on each one.
Well, what I mean is, it's not a certified, it's only certified for this part because it has the dimensions on it.
The dimensions, despite, I understand, the rednecks, the little ones.
It's a certified parking lot. Well, it doesn't have the dimensions on it. Isn't that there? Yeah, maybe nine, yeah.
So there are, as I said, spaces for 10, 10 spaces in front of the unit. And plenty of parking on site. It's a large, very unusually shaped, oversized lot.
Yeah, I think even like the way that the parking is laid out, it gives the appearance of, of a multifamily structure. And like Mr. Cowan says, they're really down that end, it's basically mostly singles. You do have a couple twos, but they look like, like large singles, but they are twos. The two end units, I was surprised, had no windows on the, on the sides.
I think that was to try and accommodate for the, for the neighbors and give them some privacy. And in fact, Mr. Branzi shortened, or actually moved where originally he was going to locate it a little bit on the lot to accommodate the neighbor to the left. Okay, can I grab my, can you grab that? To try and accommodate on, where it says now, now formerly of Mario and what, Leandra Stefieri. They were concerned, or the neighbor and next one was concerned, whether or not there would be any shade from the property. So he tried to make sure that, oh, sorry, McManus Trust. Sorry, the McManus Trust, to make sure that there was not too much close. So there's almost 43 feet from the property line to the building.
Do you have any landscaping?
I do not have a certified landscaping plan.
But it is a very flat, existing lot.
But I don't want to see landscaping. I want to see it staked.
Okay.
But I can't vote for something I just.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to hear from other members who may or may not be here. I know the city councilman, sorry, the selectman from the area, Dan Jakudis, I believe he's here and is in support of the project. He has met and tried to really work with the neighbors. And I'm happy to continue this, to have it staked and present the board a landscaping plan, if that's what the board seeks.
Well, we'll continue the hearing anyways, and we can talk about it at the end. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor?
I have one, Diana Jakudis, what by council, thank you. Just want to let you know that we did have two neighborhood meetings. And now the two neighborhood meetings, we only had two neighbors show up. Most of the neighbors up there really weren't too concerned because if he knew what the property looked like before, it's going to be a big improvement, no matter what he does to it. The two neighbors that did show up to the meeting are actually here tonight. So before you decide anything, maybe see what their input is because they actually asked him to change the plans a few times, and he did. He sat down with them, asked them what they thought. He lowered the way the house is, they took the garage out. He's done different things. He's working with the neighbors, he's working with the abutters. So just asking you to please consider and, okay?
Well, you know, Phil's been here before with his attorney, and we've worked, he's
been very agreeable, and we've worked things out on a, on a couple cases that I can remember.
Yes.
So, yeah, Phil's been good to work with. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Hearing done, we'll close the hearing for those in favor. Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Joseph Scanlon, 236 Parkland Avenue. If there were a box checked that said maybe, I'd say maybe. But to observe my rights as an abutter, I would like to record it against, and I'd like to continue to work with Mr. Branzi. He didn't see to my request to lower the height. But still, there's always concern of density and traffic on that street, and I'd like to continue the process, so.
So you want the case continued?
Yeah, I would, and I, I.
So, I'm, I'm open-minded on this, but I also want to observe my property rights as an abutter. And I also feel that I'm not in a position to speak in opposition because I'm not 100% in favor. There's no place with someone who wants to say maybe, I can't stand up and speak, so I have to speak in opposition at this time, and hopefully we can work things out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? Hearing done, we'll close the hearing. For those in opposition, we'll close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
I want to get any more information. I'm going to stay on that, you know, like, and ask the details.
Well, I'd like to see a certified landscaping and certified parking, and I'd like it to be staked, please.
A staked.
Well, they usually would state in the opinion, I know what they're saying, but that's why I leave the word.
And Mr. Chairman, I probably want to see maybe a different design, a slightly smaller than what we currently have. I really think it's, it's a large project for that, that side of the city. I really want to see it's probably something much smaller than what we currently have in the drawings today.
I can tell you, requesting some information from the ISD, and it came back that probably maximum units on that would be three, based on it.
Right, and you asked for 10, right?
No, four.
Four, sorry. Four.
But, and, you know, that's probably, and again, I know you do a good job, but that, there really isn't a lot of creativity on that. I mean, the front looks nice and everything, but you've got four units stacked together. Really take a look with, really think, I'd think, I'd like to see you really think about some sort of redesign for that lot, so that they're more maybe individually tight-looking units or whatever. But to me, that's awful institutional, commercial looking. With the four units, the 10 parking spaces out front, now you're creating a little, you know, like a little apartment building. And I don't think that fits in up on there, you know.
I don't think it could fit, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
So, you know, we'll give you an opportunity. You did, you did the similar thing up in, was it Linmere or?
Phil's, Phil's, Phil's man, make award and all that.
Yep.
So you're looking for more individual homes?
Well, that's just me personally. I don't like that book.
I second that, too. Yes, be creative. There's plenty of example in here, see, where that you can draw.
Would you, would you want them, we tried to put them together just because we thought that would possibly look better. You're looking for individual freestanding?
Well, that's up to you, yes. We don't tell you how you should design this, but.
You could consider maybe breaking the building a little bit more, like, monolithic, with some punch, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe two-wine, a little bit.
Breaking the chain.
You could go like two feet forward.
Yeah, sure.
You know, you could cut that right, right down the middle, that's a nice 10,000 square foot lot for a single-family home style.
But, yeah, just try to get more creative on that. Because I really don't think that's the right structure for that particular lot. I appreciate everything that you have, you know, you've reduced it and you've met the neighbors' concerns, but it just doesn't look right, I don't think, for that part of, that neighborhood.
I think the, the tend to make the scales smaller. You may have a squat move if the proportion is off, the side profile. I think it's, it's going to be tough, you know, with users. But I think the scale, like, there's something wrong with it. It looks like.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a very simple city, you know, where it's designed, I don't know.
And I don't think driving down Parkwood Ave., and getting to that lot, and all you're going to see is hot tub, lacrosse park. And I think that's a terrible look.
No, the hot tub is, is just one driveway, and the hot tub is further back. The rest is all going to be landscaping.
I'm just looking to see where you have these hot tubs.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah.
That's why I want to see a certified parking lot, and I don't want to look at a lot of hot tubs. And that's why, I'm very concerned with the landscaping.
So you want to, I said, I need to be actually thinking though.
Permission?
Do you want to, are you looking for, I assume, my?
Well, that's just what I'm asking, to get something.
Well, it's certified.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So I guess it's continued.
So would you like, we have a meeting on February 4th. That's only two weeks, so we don't know if you want to go the 4th. If you want to go, then the next meeting would be on the?
March?
No, it would be 18?
We have a meeting on February 18th, yes.
Yeah, it'd be February 18th.
March, is it?
February 18th.
February 18th, that gives you a month to think about it.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions, you can, I'll, I'll say, let me.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll come up with something. That would be nice.
Please.
Thank you, Councilor. Oh, yeah. Wait till she gets through the signing.
Thank you so much.
So, motion to continue?
Continue, too. What's that, February 18th?
February 18th.
February 18th.
Motion by Mr. Cowan, seconded by Mr. Wood. Roll call, please. Terry.
Mr. Crowe, agreement. Mr. Wood?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Crowley?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Cowan?
Yes, to continue.
And Mr. Colton?
Yes. They calculated one, but I'm sure they paid.
February 18th.
Thank you very much.
A question has come up. The fee was real, originally miscalculated. You guys took care of it.
I provided two different fees, one for 600 and something, and one for 1500.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Flo, you sitting on this one?
Sure.
Next one? All right, we're going to do, next case is 556 Boston Street, petitioner Steve Hirsch to allow the continued use of the rear yard of a three-family residential dwelling in the R2 district as a contractor's yard. The meeting is now open for those in favor.
Good evening, my name is Steve Hirsch. I own Commercial Landscape Services, and we received a ticket for parking at 556 Boston Street from Inspection Services. I guess they were doing, they were walking around the neighborhood, and they saw my truck parked in the yard, and it's got loads of oil on the truck. I live at 281 Boston Street, about a mile up the road, and I can't park on the street at night. And I've talked to the parking department about that, so we've been parking here, and I'm friends with the people who own 556 Boston Street, El Teal. She couldn't be here tonight, she's a senior citizen, and she's got some health issues. We keep the property, we maintain the property. We're only in there at night. At this time of year, it snows out, I plow at her, Elmer and her family, it's a three-family, and her grandchildren, great-grandchildren live in the house, they're on the, the other three floors. And we keep everything immaculate year-round, including sidewalks, the gutters, and that's it. We try to be good neighbors, get along with everybody. It's just a matter of needing a place to park. Not really a contractor's yard, just a parking spot. I literally get out of my car, park it, walk a few feet over, get the truck in a trailer, drive off, work all day, come back, and park the car, the truck after it was, and do the reverse, and get in the car and go home, and then do it again the next day.
I know you've had a successful business in the city for a long time.
Many years, yeah. I own the city of Lynn. I hate to say it, I work there, I went to school there, and involved in a lot of community things here in the school, with community development, EDIC here in the city, we've brought the traffic idols. I work with Family and Children's Services. I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and sure has several offices there. And Cradleman Bay Roof, we've done volunteer work with them, and some of the schools and some other things. And we just want to continue on and be good neighbors, and that's what we're just in provision of, have a place to park.
Do you keep any trailer out there? Do you keep any lawnmower with gasoline, any snow blower, any, anything like that?
There's a snow blower on the property, but it's not mine, it belongs to a homeowner. They maintain the sidewalk in the winter. I plow the, there's a little driveway that leads to a small parking yard. I plowed out the truck, and the homeowner's sidewalk takes care of the sidewalk with the snowblowers. The snow blower that's on the property, a beater or two, are his. And my equipment is an enclosed trailer that's hooked up to a truck during the season. So get the truck, drive off, come back at the end of the day, park the truck, and.
But the trailer also contain power equipment.
Yeah, it's got two mowers and a couple of blowers and some weed rackers and.
During off-season, winter months, it just kind of stays there.
It's winterized and it's locked, you know. It's drained down and, you know, prepared for the winter because it, you know, needs gas in the winter. And.
These nice rugged trailers, too. It's a nice rugged trailer.
Right. I have another trailer that doesn't get used as much. It actually scaled back and without you, it's a couple of times out. I'm finding help, but I have a tailwind, I just, but that leaves, and the other trailer doesn't go up that often.
I don't mean to sound fresh, but you know how they say the shoemaker's children never have shoes? Well, if you're a landscaper, your yard is a beautiful piece of property, needs a much to be desired as far as landscaping goes.
You don't think the property is maintained well there?
No, I mean, what is it? There's nothing. It's just a great big yard, and it's just, everything is hilt and skeletoned, because it drops a parker of it. Why don't you do some landscaping in the wrong place, is what I'm saying.
Because the homeowner, her great-granddaughter, was a swing set, and there were other toys there, and they need rental parking.
That's way over on the other side.
Well, in season, there are perennials and things that you don't see. I'm guessing you're looking at the pictures that we provided. There are perennials that come up along the house. There are flowers from May until the first hot frost, usually around Halloween, somewhere around there. There are other, there are other plants, and we did have a tree that came down in a storm, and we had damage to the hedge because they drove dry, they drove through it last winter. We'll try to get that to fill in because I can't have mature plants. So we have smaller plants in that gap, and hopefully over time, we've been feeding them this past season, hopefully they'll fill in. We'll put in more plants, you know, if you like. There are plants in the back, I didn't see along the back fence. I have Korean lime like that in those pictures. You won't be able to see them because they're deciduous, they dropped on their leaves, so it looks, you just see.
Dorming.
Be a branches, yeah. And in season, they flower in May, usually, late May, if I remember correctly. Up there full of leaves, strings along the fence. The back fence has aluminum slats in it to promote the privacy that the family put in years ago for that reason. We maintain the lawn, it looks like a golf course. In season, we keep that, and some of the other neighbors don't, keep their property up. Not all of them, just one. That is a jungle next door with abandoned cars. We put plants in a long fence and vines to screw down, and we don't have the aluminum slats because the house is dilapidated on one side, and the roof is falling. And Inspection Services has been there for that. We keep the lawn, it's mowed every week, and if we go into a drought, there is no irrigation there, and we try not to waste water, we do some other things to conserve water. It's mowed probably every two weeks, every 10 days on a daily basis. The hedge is done four times a year, and it's kept very good.
It's the best part of the property, the hedges. That's the best part. It hides, you can't even look in and see what your yard looks like.
But that's what the homeowners want, there's a lot of noise from traffic, the hedge buffers the, that. We've had issues with, every morning, we're picking up nips and liquor bottles and trash. And if that hedge weren't there, then there would be a big ugly fence. Every single morning, we're picking up food, used diapers.
Everything.
Yeah. Without that hedge, maybe.
Oh, I love the hedge.
The property, the lawn, we strike the lawn, it's cut at an angle, it's cut at different directions at different times.
I mean, truck, we're talking about, about the lawn, of your backyard, I mean trucks.
Two trucks and two trailers. And like I said, one trailer doesn't go up that often. It's pretty much a backup, and it's used for the City of Lynn Christmas Parade. We sponsor a float for the Boys and Girls Club, and that's, goes out about three times a year for the Christmas Parade, and then usually twice a year to transport sometimes a piece of equipment to the repair shop. So I don't have to take the other trailer. One's an open trailer, and the other's the enclosed trailer that we use all the time.
Mr. Hirsch, I think what you, what you're saying here is okay, and you know, now this thing about the trash, I mean, notify the police about it, you know, spark it, because that affects the whole neighborhood.
Right. Not the police, we've spoken to.
Spectacular. You should report it to some authority, say your authority to help spark it. Where's the company? Where's the source?
People walking by.
pedestrian. That's up to the police department.
We've had the same issue. We maintain our five, I'm going to say 518, and I could be wrong, Boston Street, a little Parkland condo next to Williams Brothers. And we've had, we actually, the owners of the building there put up cameras, because we had people going behind an ivory-like hedge, there's a space of about four feet between the hedge and the building next door. And just the amount of nips, food bottles, soil, clothing, I won't go into detail, it's pretty disgusting. And we, we keep it clean when we're in there, working, we go in there every week. And that's probably six or seven doors down from where we are, and it's the same thing. There's, you know, used condoms, clothing, just random trash. And we do the best we can. It's just there, it's not, can't blame our kids, they're adults still. We've caught people in there, and now that they have cameras at, I think it's 518, I don't have that information with me. They have two cameras, one facing their parking lot, and one facing the driveway entrance where people are dumping things. And it's, that's been dumped over there, missing with the nips and.
Mr. Hirsch, you have some suggestions, I suggest you, you said some more, or, yada, yada, landscaping, oh, sorry, the, I didn't hear you handle that.
Right.
You say it's plants that are, are, I know, a little bit tight, but, I mean, you got.
We have foster, we have. We have foster, we have coriandre lilies that are, they all die back this time of year, they go to the valley.
But they're not great.
They are great, they come back every year.
Yeah, but, all right, I can argue with it.
Good.
Really? Surprise.
What she is interested, I think we're all interested in beautifying the city.
Sure.
Put more plants in if you need, you should be able to...
Yeah, we have room, we could plant...
Sounds like we'd be worse off without them there.
We could plant a tree.
We have to do, make a little landscape, send it to the board.
Sure. Okay.
What can you make them come back for?
Can I make a suggestion?
Any other question?
Just a suggestion. There's a wood, maybe some type of, not fans, maybe a shrub. You know, you could put your shop stuff on one side and the family stuff on one side. Then, you know, in the future we'll know, you know, because right now it seems like the lawnmower belongs to them, but to us it really belongs to you maybe because you're the landscaper, but you know, exactly, but you know, they come along.
They have a snow blower, they have a small little...
Or even that little swing set in the back, maybe somehow, the lawn's pretty big, the back is pretty, I'm sure you can make, make it nice, presentable that you can have some type of shrubs that are separate between...
Some kind of screening.
Yeah.
I think, I think you also have to be concerned with safety, so I think you need enough landscape. I don't think you want to go absolutely crazy, you're adopting rodents.
Right.
And you're constantly, everybody's picking up trash constantly, so...
We don't want to create a magnet for the trash.
Yeah, you don't want to do too much that you want to make with them.
This is in the backyard, this is not in front of the building.
But still, people are going behind a screen in a different...
No, that's a different property.
But no, but still on the same street, I mean, it's not like...
Both properties have lighting, property we maintain is with all the...
There's a balance, yeah.
And we have lighting at 556. We put in lighting a number of years ago all around the building. So we had an issue, something came in the window of one of the houses, there's a narrow space on the, not on the driveway, I said on the outside. At night someone came and put a window and tried to grab the TV, this was years ago. So we put in a motion detector light on that narrow side. And on the back parking area, we have a photocell light, like a street lamp type, good sized light. And in the driveway, we have a smaller light that's on a photocell. We did, a number of years ago, we did a hedge of a row of sunflowers straight across to block, to do what you mentioned, to block the lawn area from where we are in the back. Again, those are annuals, those only last one year. It was beautiful, you had a huge row and we'd be willing to do that again.
So maybe some type of hedge that's, you know, maybe evergreens, I don't know, probably not a variety, but something else.
The only concern with arborvitae is, as you mentioned too, we don't want to create a place...
But they sell, they do have doors, right? Small, small ones, maybe that would work.
Yep. We do have, we have ornamental grass called ribbon grass that grows above this high there that's, looks like an after a spider plant that also dies back at this time of year so you can't see it in the pictures. We did a row of that and behind it we got the sunflowers a number of years ago. It was beautiful, it attracted birds and butterflies and other things.
Sounds nice.
We do have window boxes on the back porch with annuals. They sometimes take a beating from the heat because they're not that big and sometimes it gets very hot on that side of the building. Even if they're watered in the morning, if you add things to soil, they still have a tendency to fade when the sun hits the house.
I would say by the feedback that you have, certainly have an interest in maintaining, helping maintain that piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none will close the hearing. For those in favor, I will read a letter. Dear Chairman Cole, I am writing this letter in support of the above mentioned petition to allow the continued use of the rear yard of a three family residential dwelling in the R2 district as a contractor's yard. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this manner. John M. Walsh, Counselor Board Seven. Okay, the hearing is now, we'll open the hearing for those in opposition. Is anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the meeting. For those in opposition, we'll close the meeting. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant.
Okay, we have a motion.
Any...
To agree it and second?
Second.
Second.
Call the roll.
What?
What if it becomes ten trucks there?
Did you call the roll?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mrs. Calhoun?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Cole?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We do, the homeowners also forgot to mention, they plant vegetables also on the property and I'll make sure, we'll add some more plants once the season gets going and the weather warms up. Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
You want to get a little far in the center of the...
Sure. I will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next case is going to be 26 Phillips Ave. Petition of Marco Perez by his agent Rod Rivera to permit the use of a basement as capital space in a pre-existing non-conforming multi-family dwelling in an R4 district. The hearing is now open. For those in favor, come on up, give your name and address to the...
I'm Rod Rivera, contractor and designer for the project and this is Marco Perez. He doesn't speak English well, so I'm actually going to speak on behalf of him.
Excuse me, you're the contractor and the designer?
And a designer.
Okay.
You've been before us before.
Many times. So the idea is, when he bought the property, there were rooms built and ISD had noticed that he had those rooms built, so they had them removed. It wasn't that he did it unintentionally, he bought the property like that. So now what he wants to do is use half of that basement as a playroom and the other half leave it as a common area, if you will. Move the boilers toward the back and this way it'll, kids won't touch them or get burned and stuff like that. And that area will be covered. We're going to upgrade the smoke alarms to accommodate the proper, bring that area to code. So just basically just built in one wall here in the middle, which is under the beam, and then one wall across to the two doors.
You don't have so...
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry. So this is what, this is what's there now, right now, this is what we want to do and this way. And this is coming from the back of the property, this is actually the front of the building. This bathroom is existing and the city allowed it and they have it, so we don't have, we're not going to do any work here. The area that we're going to do is actually only this area here and then just enclose the new water heaters and boilers.
Yeah, they have two means of egress out of there.
Well, in the basement itself?
Yeah.
Well, it has the bucket here and the stairs going up there, but they're not remote.
They're not remote, it should be remote.
Right, so the idea would be increasing the size of the window, because it's only going to be for play area, it's not going to be...
Not for me.
You're talking about a finance, but that wasn't a small area. Where is the, where is the boiler?
It's on this side. Yes, it's going to be on the left side.
I think it was it's...
That's going to be enclosed.
Is it right in there?
Yes. And we're going to have the proper smoke compartment outside and all that, that's going to trigger, if anything happens there, it's going to trigger two of the units above.
Yeah, the roof's...
Sorry. I did, I did.
It was a two means of egress.
Right, they're not, they're not. They may not remember now, but when I spoke to...
I mean, you told...
Yes, yes.
You showed that that's fine.
Yes.
Well, that, that one won't be considered a means of egress because that's taking you to another, another course.
Same, it's, it's not...
And, and possibly too close to each other.
Right, right.
You know what I mean? So there's a, that's a code violation, building code violation to be too close to each other. But it's not a livable space.
It's not going to be a livable space.
It's not going to be a livable space, it's just a common space.
Correct. Well, well, this area is going to be not common, it's going to be, I mean, the whole family can use it because the whole building is all about the family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if they want to play or they have a cookout in the back instead of...
Common.
Right.
That's what I'm referring, it's common. And the other side is just going to be the boiler.
And what's the front there? That's your bathroom?
That's the bathroom, existing bathroom, there's no way to make.
There's no kitchen down there?
No, no kitchen at all.
And it's, so this is going to be, who lives on the first floor?
Marco Perez.
So no, yeah.
And then the second floor is his father and some other relatives and then the third floor is his brother-in-law. So it's all family there, for the building.
So I'm thinking, are you having a marriage or a marriage?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, I have a plan here, you have existing first floor layout.
Yes.
And then it says proposed first floor layout.
That's showing that no changes are...
I can't see anything different?
Correct, because nothing is going to change.
That's first floor, this is the basement.
Yeah, this is all...
No, I know, but...
But I'm just saying, why is this...
Why is it labeled like that?
I spent 10 minutes looking for the difference.
Right, right. So I did it, so it shows, it shows that no changes are going to be there within, because one of the ideas was to install a spiral stairs or a set of stairs from the first floor to the basement. And after talking to ISD, they said that that was possibly not a doable thing. So then when we came up with this idea, he says, well, that, no matter what, you're still going to have to go in front of the board. So we took that alternative to come aboard with these plans.
So you should make a special note there that it's going to be a stain.
Well, the petition...
But we know.
Yeah, the petition here says to use existing space already.
Well, but he's got two planes and they're both the same.
On the first floor, so...
On the first floor, yeah, it's, it's fine, yeah. Existing in, yeah, there's no change on the first floor.
Correct, that's okay.
Like I said, we just...
So I'm still wondering, why are you still coming here?
Yeah, I'm looking at that thing.
What's the variance he needs for this? He just...
Yeah, why are you coming here for a basement? You've only built a wall and moved in two utilities.
He says, well, one, one of the things that ISD Keith told me was, because it's a three family, that they don't...
Have a renovation?
Well, no, that you can't really do anything with basements. So he says you have to, you have to, you have to go in front of the board for this.
Yeah, because it's below grade.
Yeah. Yeah. And it doesn't technically, you don't have the, yeah, I mean, we, there has, there are some units below grade, but that doesn't have the proper windows for the, for the...
Right.
If it was going to be a unit, a cabinet.
There's only one window.
Well, no, it has, it has, it has three windows, but...
Yeah, but you put a finance window there, right?
Right.
You trying to do that?
Yes.
Put it down, no, it's not making a problem with it.
So, so, so you could egress through the window if you had to?
Yes, as long as it's 45 inches from the, from the ground.
So you're changing out the windows?
Yes. Just on this area, nothing in the rest of the basement.
Does it show it there?
I believe... No, it does not.
But we'll have to write it in.
Well, I say...
Yeah, so stipulation.
Yeah, I didn't see it, yeah.
Could I redraw?
No, I think we could put a stipulation on this. Can we, can we do a stipulation where he has to add in?
No, we should be correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, but he's going to have to withdraw it, redraw it for ISD anyways, but we can put that in.
That could be a stipulation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So install, what do we want for them?
The second means of egress, so possible.
Escape windows.
Escape window, yeah.
Escape windows.
Well, you also have an elevation, you can show it in the elevation.
Right.
That'll be ISD, that won't be...
But I'll make a note, I'll make a note and I'll also make notes for the first floor that no changes are going to be done to the first floor.
Yeah, that's fine, that was, that's, that's okay. We'll forgive you. Any other questions of Mr. Rivera? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor of this? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. For those in favor, we'll open it for those in opposition. Is there anyone here in opposition to this plan? Anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition to seeing none, we'll close the hearing. For those in opposition, we'll close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Ms. Curly. Please call the roll.
To grant the stipulation of a finance window being there.
Escape windows on the, on the right-hand side. There'll be what, three of them or how many?
There's three there.
Three of them.
Yeah, put them all over there.
Okay.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant the stipulation.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, to grant the stipulation.
And Mr. Cole?
Yes. You want to say?
Hello?
Thank you. I don't know what I'm going to stamp on this, but I think I'm going to figure something out. I think I'll stamp it on the, the actual corner. What's that, what's that, those on the phones? Yeah, that will get fired, yeah, that'll be part of it.
But that's where you put the stipulation.
Yeah, I figured, yeah.
Take a notice now.
Okay, the next case will be case number 992677 Broad Street. Petition of Hubert J. Park by his attorney, Sammy Vitale, to permit alterations to a pre-existing non-conforming dentist's office in the R5 apartment district to allow construction of a handicap access ramp in addition with less than the required parking spaces and dimensions, finding that such alterations are not substantially more detrimental in effect on the neighborhood. The hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman, if I could beg the board's indulgence, the architect is coming from another city in town, we expected him at 8:30. I have another matter, unless you took it up on our, on the conservation, but it was a continued case I had and so since you opened this, you may just want to continue it briefly and then we can do calls and then hopefully the architect will be here. It would be more productive, I think, to have the architect here on board.
Yeah, we'll, so we'll suspend that, the Broad Street case. And we'll, we'll open up the case for 991524 Bruce Place. Petition of Paul Dumokian by his attorney, Sammy Vitale, to permit the reconstruction of a wood framed, three family residential dwelling destroyed by fire on a lot containing 4,1315 square feet, frontage of 49 feet in the N1 district and less than the required parking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you might recall, we were here a while ago because of the weather and, and then the board gave us the opportunity to revisit the request, which was originally for a three family that had been destroyed by a fire and not timely sought to be rebuilt. And members of the board made a positive suggestion that, and refresh my recollection, when, said, why don't you do what you did in the Highlands? I'll confess that I thought I was smarter than that and I looked at other alternatives, I don't want to tell you that I didn't, but at the end of the day, I came back and said, you're right, why don't I look at what I did in the Highlands? And so for the members who maybe knew or weren't here for that saga, we, we constructed for some reasons that were sound and for which I think have the same applicability for this neighborhood as it did up in the Highland neighborhood on Hawthorne, which was a building that blends in, looks like the others and is not, in my judgment, an over-intensive and is not, in my judgment, an over-intensive use. It's a, essentially the same plan, uh, that we had at Hawthorne Street. Uh, it's a two-family dwelling, two floors, each two bedrooms. The width of the property is thirty-two, the length, I believe, is forty-four, and, uh-
And no egress going to the, I mean, to the attic?
Yeah, I remember that too. I don't think there's no egress going to the attic, okay? But, uh, so, at the end of the day, I went back and did exactly what you said. I contacted Mr. Wykoff, who had not only did that plan, but built that building. And, um, I also contacted Mr. Reed and asked him, uh, and we came to the usual trade-offs. And that was, uh, there was an existing one-car garage, which we proposed to remove and then instead put two parking spaces that meet the design standards. I know that a three, a two-family would require three spaces. I had requested in, uh, relief that we sought in our petition to have less than the required parking, but, so we have two, but they meet the design standards. We have a driveway that leads, uh, the old day, where the house did exist, it was more to one side and the driveway was on the side that led to that single-car garage. There really aren't any curb paths out there, and so when we balanced the fact that the lot tapers, it's forty-nine at the front and it's like fifty-two at the rear, we decided to bring it in on the right-hand side, uh, as the drive, and put the parking at the rear. I did look at various parking plans, but they all would have come at the expense of having literally no green area. We would have had to try to take some of the front and use that for parking. So I, I hope that we, uh, did what you asked, which was to revisit and look in, accept a two-family house, uh, one that blends in, one that has two bedrooms, uh, and one that has, uh, more parking than it did before, because when it was a three-family, it had a one-car garage. So we've increased by fifty percent the number of parking spaces. We've actually reduced, uh, the number of overall bedrooms, because you made it clear that you didn't want a, a three-family. And so I think, uh, given, uh, the unique circumstances that affected this, which was, not only was there a tragic fire, but there was litigation that followed and it precluded anything. Paul repeated to me once again, I couldn't do anything until July of two thousand nineteen. It wasn't that he, you know, disregarded it, it was willful, he was just in a bind, that because of what followed from the fire, he couldn't do anything, because part of the litigation that followed prevented him from, uh, conveying the land, doing anything with respect to the land until the litigation got resolved. It got resolved, uh, in July, he then approached, uh, the ward counselor spoke to him. I had spoken to the ward counselor, who, I want to make clear, um, that I don't misrepresent anything that Counselor Stavert told me. He said to me, he was sympathetic to the fact that he couldn't do anything with the land because of the litigation. But he also said he was sympathetic to the views of the board with respect to what the board felt would- He didn't want to see him secluded from any use of a land because of what had happened. But he leaves to your judgment whether it should be a three or a two, and I had both a prior conversation with Counselor Stavert and a subsequent conversation to let him know that, uh, we were going to follow your suggestion, and he was happy with that, that it would be a two-family dwelling.
Which way are they going back here?
Excuse me?
Is it the same footprint?
No, the same footprint as the firehouse.
The site, the site plan, yeah.
Oh, that's the footprint of, on the plan, yes, on the Reed plan.
You guys have both asked the same question.
Well, I was just asking, which way is, are you entering to park down here?
No. We, I had plans done with a building, uh, that had two spaces and one space out here. But you can see Reed putting landscaping, and then the problem is, if you take, uh, the dimensional requirements and you only got forty-nine feet, and you got a building that's thirty-two feet wide, then you, we wound up with eight on one side, nine on the other, which is a sufficient drive to reach the spaces at the rear, which meet all the design standards. They're five feet from the property lines, they're nine by eighteen, there's sufficient maneuverability, and so, but I did have other plans prepared to try to juggle, and, and I, I sort of concluded, uh, two things. Most of the houses on the street have less front, less front setback than this proposed. And, uh, the goal was to try to get and satisfy as many of the, uh, existing dimensional requirements as there were, and this house does that. It has the requisite setback, uh, re, uh, sidelines, and, uh, in terms of, uh, the ability to put the parking at the rear. And so, when I tried moving pieces on the board, I think that the only other plan that could work is you'd wind up with a space somewhere over in here.
I can't see where you-
It would be up front. You follow that, but I, I think-
But so you, so you're going down the right?
Yeah, but I'm saying, if, the only way you can get a third space, in my judgment, is to use a portion of the front.
Yeah, right. You could push the house back. You could push, actually push the house back and put the parking-
Well, but, but I, I, I'm sort of, I'm twisted between as to whether, I know there are some members who don't like-
No, I don't, I, I, no, no, you're right.
So, that, that's what I had to consider, is that, you know, what made, uh, the most sense? And, and from my perspective, uh, this plan, it, it sort of, we were able to check off most of the boxes, where other plans, I could, I could get some of the boxes, but not all of them.
So I say waiver for the parking, is a waiver also for large on the site? Is a waiver, you're not, no, certainly.
I asked for less than the required parking.
You could, you could either-
So I need three, and I got two guys.
So a waiver for the-
And it brought, what was there was a one-car garage. So that's the request, that was of the car. And the spaces are all-
So the existing site, uh-
That was the house that we, was there. There's no frame that exists under the back of it, that showed what it had been burned. We did it by Google Earth and going back and photographing and trying to reconstruct. That house clearly did not meet the dimensional requirements.
So it was rectilinear, then this one's more square?
Yeah, but, but, but I, I would say this, that, and Mr. Coler's right. We, we do have a ten-foot setback, but I think, even though some of the other houses are built closer to the street, if this may, if we're going to start over and do it, why don't we start over and do it as right as we can?
The only thing that's missing is one park. Yeah, and then the driveway is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that allows maneuverability, and, listen. I know what's going to happen when it snows, if there's more than one car. Somebody's going to park in that driveway. I mean, I'm not going to stand here and say, "No one's ever going to park in the driveway," but, um, I think with a two-bedroom and a two-bedroom, and a place that there were more bedrooms and there were three units in one parking space, that that, for parking, is an improvement, because it's parking that can work. It isn't just parking that is drawn on a plane, it's parking that can work. Uh, and I, that, and that was one of the concerns I had when I drafted the petition and asked for the relief that I asked for. Uh, but I did try to, to try different arrangements. But at the end of the day, I came down to the only other way you could get a third space is put it at the front, and that would be at the expense of landscaping, it would be pushing the house further back. It just didn't make sense, uh, to, to do all of that.
Mr. Wykoff, I feel it's a good fit, it's a good design, it's a good fit for the city of Hennepin. You had a zoning violation on the side, on the rear line. The outside of five feet, do you want that amended?
I thought, I thought, I made, I thought Mrs. Reed said to me that I, I met the five-foot buffer on both the side and the rear.
About to show it's four feet.
Oh, yeah.
Four and a half.
Let me take a look. That wasn't his instruction. I think it can work with five and five, because I did the math. If I, if you take-
Yeah, and you could just move it a foot this way.
You can move it closer to the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are you naming it like that, when you're letting it decision, but I have to show that there's a violation there?
Yeah, I, I, I looked at that, okay? And I concluded that if that was a problem, we, we got space between the, this, that space and the rear of the house, we could move the spaces further back, but I thought he, I, my instruction was, meet the design standard five-five, and-
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't on the back.
So the parking is approaching?
To me, it looks like it.
Yeah, but we can, but, but, you can see the distance between that space and the rear of the house.
That's five feet.
So I did ask in the petition, I think, for parking relief as to number into the design specifications, but I thought honestly that we met it.
I don't think Ralph- I, I think you might have met it, I, I see a five.
Yeah, I, I-
I think that's the landscaping.
If you scale that, I mean, if that's five feet, why isn't that?
That's not even, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to me, it looks like a black right there.
Yes, to know, well, I'm going to make sure we get the right dimension and get you a plan with the right dimension.
Well, that's all right.
This might do it.
I mean, I, I, I will tell you that I, I haven't got a scale ruler with me. But if you look at that five feet from the side-
And you wonder why they made that four feet plus or minus. Must be because of the space between the houses and the parking space. But I'm saying, it's a violation.
I think he's got the five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he might be all right on this one. I think that could, that could put change to the landscaping.
And if you look, also, he's got the outline of where the existing garage had been, I think, as I see it. If you see, and that's what I'm wondering, whether he was trying to show that line to where the existing garage was. I think he's got the overlay of the, of the, where the existing single-car garage was.
Oh, yeah, that could be, that's that paint line.
Right.
Or it could have been past.
Yeah, but I, I'll, I'll clarify that, absolutely.
So you understand the-
So he didn't take it off.
Yeah.
So do I understand that ninety percent of the backyard is going to be hot-topped, and the whole driveway is going to be hot-topped?
The, well, the driveway-
Or, if you push the house back, then the whole front's going to be hot-topped?
No, I think that, what, first of all, it doesn't have to all be hot-topped. There are, you can, what is it, a wind pack? There, there are ways, all we want to make certain is people can get in and out safely.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and it, and I purposely asked Mr. Reed to show landscaping, I talked to Paul about that, and we talked about putting some lawn or something at the front of the, that's why I'm saying that, notwithstanding that virtually every other house on the street has less than a ten-foot setback. We maintained the ten-foot setback, because we wanted to have some area at the front that would not be paved. And so we traded off and said, "Let's put the house ten feet back," notwithstanding that if you go along the street line, most of the houses are much closer. So that was a trade-off there, but we also satisfied the requirement for ten feet for a front setback.
But most of the backyard, because you can't help that it's going to be hot-topped.
It doesn't have to be hot-topped.
No, there's a patch.
There's existing landscaping along the left side of the house, as it stands now.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm talking about where these cars are parked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all got to be, the cars have to drive out to get to the driveway, so that's all got to be a solid-
Well, the main concern, then, is all-
We get the four-foot buffer and the five-foot buffer.
Yeah.
But we can put landscaping along the back fence, so that, that's not a problem. We don't have to be hot-topped.
He's got, he's got landscaping drawn in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
I said ninety percent of it will be hot-topped.
Yes, it will. It is, it's going to be ninety percent.
Yeah.
Well, not of the entire lot.
Ninety percent of that is going to be hot-topped.
Ninety, ninety percent of the back-
Yeah.
Ninety is the only-
It is, so it's-
It's a high percentage, for sure.
Is there any reason why this is dated January twenty-first today?
Yeah, because we went through various changes, and the real answer is Mr. Reed was in Vermont for the holidays.
He barely made it. No, I'm, I'm going to just say, any, when major plans come in the day of a hearing, we're going to accept them and we're going to continue it for the next meeting. But this one, I'm just telling you this.
I had asked him this plan soon, I need to tell you that.
If, if, everybody doesn't get a chance to study it, but this is a single-
I, I was working, I don't know what other people were doing, but I can just tell you that that's the answer.
Yeah, no, the issue, this house is nine feet wider than the original, the original hu, uh, three-feet. Yeah, I mean, that's basically the, the reason why we're, the other one shows much more parking, but-
Just one, one issue with the, the layout itself. I know you grabbed this from the gentleman up in the Highlands. I hope that's not the, the new house drawing, because, uh, there was a stipulation with no second floors, means of egress to the third floor, the attic space. This drawing is showing that, it's showing the state.
I don't even know if there's space in the attic. I know he did a ba, basement plan, I know he did that, I asked him about that.
He's showing.
It's showing, so-
He's showing that.
So if you want to put that condition, then, I mean, people are going to be able to get to the ba, the ladder or whatever.
From the basement all the way up, I mean, from the ground floor all the way up to the basement, I mean, to the attic space without going to, um, to any of the rooms.
Well, there's no stretch on, through the walls here, that's the only-
That's right.
Right, so, yeah, we don't, we don't know.
But if you're going to have to pitch with a roof-
I, I don't think it doesn't-
It's not finished yet.
We don't stop that. The hack wall, with-
Yeah, there's not much, I don't think there's anything.
It's not continuing. We don't, we don't have a section, we don't know.
So let's ask the owner, what, what's your plans for the, uh, for the attic area?
Yeah, I think this point will be minimal, I mean, we're not-
It doesn't look like it's, there's enough pitch to, to, to have anything-
There's no windows, there's no-
I don't think those stairs are going up to the third floor, are they?
No, I don't think that either.
No, 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 there is, as far as I know, there are.
Okay.
There are some complaints for that.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, it's going up and down.
Yeah, I don't think it's wrong. Okay, any other questions of, um, the attorney? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else favor? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for those in favor. We'll open it for those in opposition. Is there anyone here in opposition to this plan? Anyone here in opposition? Hearing, seeing none and hearing none, we will close the hearing. In opposition, we'll close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Wood? Seconded by Mr. Callen?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear more.
Motion to grant.
Great.
Yeah. Look, please call the roll.
Mr. Cowill? Um, yes. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Coler?
Yes. You're all set.
Yeah, you did a good job on it.
Extra set of plans there.
Later. Thank you very much.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Got a long haul, huh? Good steak. I did. I told you. Okay, the last case is seventy-seven Broad Street. Petitioner Hubert J. Park by his attorney Samuel Vitale, to permit alterations to a pre-existing non-conforming dentist's office in the R-five apartment district to allow construction of a handicap access ramp and in addition with less than the required parking spaces and dimensions, finding that such alterations are not substantially more detrimental in effect on the neighborhood. Hearing is now open for those-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney Vitale. With me is, uh, Dr. Park, and this is John Hadden, the architect. By night, um, since nineteen thirty-three, uh, this property's been a dentist's office. It's a combination of a dentist's office and apartments. And there was an attempt, some years ago, uh, to increase the number of apartments, and that was denied by the Board of Appeals. So it's clear that the Board of Appeals doesn't want to increase the residential footprint. And, um, over the years, what's happened with the property is that actually it's grown and an adjoining parcel was acquired. And essentially, the addition that you see is in, proposed in the area in which was acquired subsequent to the original dentist practice that was in a, essentially, in the nineteen thirty-threes, in, in many years, physicians, whether they were doctors or dentists, practiced out of their homes. Um, and, and it was not unusual, in fact, it was common, that most physicians and dentists practiced in the neighborhood where they had patients. And people could walk to the dentist, they could walk to the doctor. It was a time when actually doctors went to people's homes. And, uh, after World War Two, the city of Lynn adopted, called home occupation, ordinance for the first time, because doctors and dentists, because they were professionals, were just given that right up until about nineteen forty-eight. And so many people were coming back after World War Two, the city felt compelled to try to control the growth of professional offices, and that's when they first adopted it. And you have all lived through the long spectacle of doctors' offices in residence, and they really, doctors, you really live in there, and, and that City Council, in its wisdom, changed all that. And there's a group of uses that don't require, uh, consent if you meet the list, and there are some that do require consent, and that's from the City Council. The dentist that was here for almost forty years is retiring at the end of the month. Dr. Park bought the practice and had him as a partner, but Michael, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Colod?
Quid.
Yeah, is, is leaving. Uh, Dr. Park's specialty is pediatric dentistry, and he also works with the disabled. And as I, I learned a little bit about the nature of, uh, dental practice. And as I, I learned a little bit about the nature of dental practice. Um, and, uh, they are both clientele's that need to be served, um, but they have different needs, and hence, the, the layout, uh, was designed to sorta put the kids in one end, literally, and put people with emotional or other problems at the other end, also to make, and this is very important, because it is a focus on kids and the disabled, to make it handicapped accessible. To do that, you have to build a ramp, to build a ramp, you're gonna meet the standards of the Architectural Barriers Board, and there's a specific state statute that says that really ramps are within the purview of the Architectural Barriers Board and not the local zone ordinance. So we wanna put in a handicap ramp, but we do wanna have another entrance off of the left-hand side, and sorta, there's like a quiet room, as I understand it, and there's another room and waiting facility for kids. So the real issue, it seems to me, is twofold. One is that we wanna abandon the residential use. The residential use, um, was there when, in nineteen thirty-three, the original dentist lived in the home. I don't believe that, since that time, if there's anybody living there, it's been not the dentist. But if you look at the taxation right now, the building is taxed both residential portion and commercial portion. So if this were to be approved, we would end the residential portion, the building would all be taxed at the commercial tax rate. We have issues with respect to the use of the second floor, which is we only wanna use it for record storage or for administrative people for two reasons. One is, we don't want it to count as space for which, um, general office space has to have a percentage of the gross square footage used for our parking, and the second is, this handicapped access issue, it's not an area to which the public is going to have access, it's where they're gonna store records. So the clientele and the patients are gonna be on the first floor. Dr. Park practices four days a week, he has two people who come in who are specialists, and they come in on like Mondays, as I understand it. And, uh, so when we did an average of how many dentists are there, we came out, over a thirty-day period, it was like one and a quarter, because he's there four days, and there are two other people who come in, one's orthopedic, uh, orthodontic, I'm sorry, orthodontic, um, and so there are other people, but the other dentist is leaving, all right? And then, uh, understanding, uh, the history of the property, um, and with the assistance of the doctor, uh, and with the architect, I brought with me, uh, a plan, which I thought about, uh, it's valuable, but I concluded that they did such great work, and the facts are the facts, and so I want you to gather and share this plan, because we did an analysis of where the patients live who come to this practice, okay? How close they are, how many they are, and we all know that the difference between a professional office use, for example, and a residence, in a residence, people can come and go twenty-four seven. In a professional office, they're not there twenty-four seven, they're not there every day of the week, and they clearly see people by appointment, something I would wish I could instill in my own practice, 'cause I have people walking all the time. And I say, when you go to the doctor, don't you have to make an appointment, but for some reason, people walk in. But clearly, you can't get to see Dr. Park unless it's an emergency, I guess, but unless you have an appointment. So there's control over who comes there when. So when you look at these numbers, I think you're gonna have a reaction like I did, which is, this guy's a busy guy, he's got a lot of, he's got a lot of patients, which I think is evidence of his competence, okay? Because he's got a tremendous patient base. But they're not all there all of the time, but I do wanna share it with you, because they did such good work, and did, did a zip code analysis, broke out by city and town where people come from, and the point of giving you this is that they believe that it in fact shows you how many people live within fifteen minutes walking distance of, of this site. And, and I'll tell you what, when they explained this to me, I said to them, I have a little different take on this, and I wanted to tell you what my take is. My take is this, that not everybody in the city of Lynn has the means to go to Gentle Dental, or go to another place that I represent out on, on the Lynnway, where there's a, a big office building on the, getting to the Lynnway for some people is difficult, okay? And getting to the North Shore, uh, shopping center is difficult. And the nature of the dental world is, now that there are these, you see the ads all the time for Gentle Dental, Aspen Dental, but there are like fourteen dentists in a building. Not everybody who lives in the city of Lynn has the means or the ability to get to such places. And it seems to me we lost sight of some of the values that were there when there used to be a neighborhood dentist, and there used to be a neighborhood physician, and people didn't rely on automobiles, and they, they could walk, or they could get service in their own neighborhood. This is why I represent convenience to it. They're convenient, they're in places, people could know that they get the same product at a supermarket and maybe get it for a little less, but they have to get in a car, get dressed, and go somewhere where they can just drive down the street, and it creates, uh, an economy which services people, helps people in business, and I think Dr. Park has got a practice that services kids and services the disabled. But in order to do it, and to do it properly, he needs to have more space. And so the trade-off was, and we consider this, going up. But that had, we thought, a, a more disadvantaged approach in terms of access upstairs for a handicap, and also, uh, these impacts on people who are surrounded. So let me hand you this analysis that I, I brought, of where the patients come. I think we had that. Oh, John, what, the zip code, okay. We're looking how...
Just in case.
This is John Harden, who's the architect. Did I get one, everybody? Yeah, one, two. How come I got some? I didn't give you one. I'm saying, I, I thought I made ten copies, and I got some left, so...
I had that.
So while you're looking at that, God willing, John, if you could just give an overview, since he's designed, um, and let, let me be clear, I think Chuck Fayers' plan, uh, shows, um, there's a small addition over here, and there's a larger addition here. I would say this, that the doctor has required his staff to not park at the site. So we're talking about making spaces available for our patients, not for staff, and...
Sam, one question on the parking. How many, 'cause you're looking for a waiver on the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
How many did you estimate were required?
I thought we came, what, twelve, John?
Correct, so, yes, twelve.
And how many have you got?
I think we got six, Chuck thinks we got five.
So, yeah, there, there are actually six, one, two, three, four, five. The sixth is that the, the end of this lot...
Doesn't work, I, yeah.
No, it actually does, it does work.
Well, I'll tell ya, not when there was a car parked up against that.
Oh, sorry, John Harden, fifty-four School Street, Manchester.
And does, everybody's got this Chuck Fayers plan? 'Cause I brought extras of those.
Yeah, yeah, I've got everything.
Something that happened, uh, last week, which we think is very important, um, there's always been a relationship with the, with this property at the back, which happens to share this parking area, so this isn't on this...
This is registered land with a right-of-way. We went through the history of these parcels and how they got divided up, and the numbering is, it was really not easy, because the numbering changed, um, access changed, there's two rights of way, uh, but ultimately, the right-of-way that is here allows access from the left-hand side of the property to the rear, uh...
Sam, you're right in front of it.
The expanded, uh, address at seventy-seven, it also allows access to what now is known as eighty-one R, but it wasn't always eighty-one R. These numbers had like seventy-five, seventy-seven and a half, they had different numbers.
Well, you just were standing right in front of it, Sam, I'd like to see that.
So the, the existing parking, or these spots?
This is where you work, right here.
There's the right-of-way, so the property line is split evenly, uh, between the right-of-way, but then the lot expands here and provides, uh, more parking. Now, traditionally, over the time that, that the dentist, dentists have used this building, they've always shared this parking. We weren't sure if there was something, um, formally drawn up for that. Dr. Park has, has been in contact with the landlord, and has offered an email at this point, agreeing to use of that, of those six parking spaces during business hours.
Do you have any additional parking?
We wanna put, we wanna keep staff off any of the parking. The relationship is like a gentleman's agreement that we, we sought to formalize, but we still want, and I did ask really for two reasons, one, the dimensions of, of Chuck's last space and, uh, and the total amount. And again, we looked at different trade-offs here, we looked at if we put parking in the front, but because of, as I understand it, to, to bring a, a handicap ramp in at the grade that you need to do it, so you can push it up, as I understand it, we had to extend. You, you can't have a handicap ramp that goes this way, it's gotta go along a length. So, so that ruled out, because I, when I first looked at it, I said, well, why not use some of this, and then they explained to me, not only that reason, but that they wanted, and I think there's a plan here that shows what I talked about, because I also asked, why are there two ways?
Yeah, right. Maybe Dr. Park, you can tell us more about that, 'cause I'm still...
Yeah, the doctor can tell you.
Yeah, I'm still a little confused, why, who, so who's the bag?
He, he actually, it's to keep better control, okay? So why don't you tell them, they had the same conversation, you can come in here, and there's an entry here, and there's an entry here. The entry here, I think, is like street level. The, the real question, I think, is that, before he's asking is, why are there two ways?
Right.
You referred to that a year, a few weeks ago.
This is Dr. Hubert Park.
So, the other thing is, you, last time you were here, you, you lived this, this property here or next?
Hubert Park, he's the petitioner.
He's the petitioner.
Yeah, I'm the owner of the property, seventy-seven Broad Street, um, practice dentistry at the property.
But you don't live there, kind of?
I reside at the property, I live in Cambridge.
Oh, okay, got it.
One point of information, I was a little, I was trying to just follow, uh...
Sure.
Sam at the beginning. Are you, are you selling the business, or are you staying here?
He's buying.
Meriting.
I acquired the practice in two thousand seventeen in June. Uh, I never practiced prior to that, in this practice, I practiced in Beverly, and I prior practiced at Cummings Center, and also at National Hospital of Dentists in Boston. Acquired the practice, uh, previous to Stephen Proman, Michael Coeden's, two partners' practice, uh, I've, uh, acquired a degree of both previous partners, um, and practiced there full-time for the last probably three, four years.
And, and how many, how many dentists and specialists do you, you project will be working here?
Uh, so currently, it is myself, as Sam mentioned, practice about four days a week, typically Monday through Thursday. And we've got a, uh, Dr. Lee, who's there on Mondays, usually two to three Mondays a month. So when he's there, I'm usually there with him. And I've got Carmen Ramella, another P D dentist, who's there on about two Thursdays a month. Uh, and Dr. Michael Coeden, who at once practiced four, five days a week, has scaled back to about two days a month now, and his last date is actually January thirtieth.
So you're looking at three, three physician?
Three, three...
Professional?
Two, three professionals that are practicing, that are...
But then, I don't, what I don't understand is, what, what's the need for three, four treatments and two surgery, and then, like, this whole...
He's the guy that...
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Mr.
I'm the dentist, Mr. Parker, Sam dentistry, which is my, my attorney.
Go ahead.
Um, Sam had alluded to the fact that we have three, sort of three categories of clientele. I've got young children, primarily from the city of Lynn, uh, primarily from local families, so about seventy percent of my family are on state medication. Uh, I've got twenty-five percent or more of my practice that are above the age of twenty-nine, which is very rare, actually kind of, uh, counterintuitive for a P D S dental practice. Uh, so a quick background, if I may, while I practiced in two thousand, two thousand fourteen through two thousand, about eighteen, at the prior practice at Cummings Center in Beverly, as well as National Hospital, as an attending there, the prior practice in Beverly, we, all the patients quote-unquote graduated from the practice 'cause they were aged out, uh, and that was very typical, and that even applied to those patients that had severe disabilities, whether that is cerebral palsy, Down syndrome, uh, et cetera. Mass General was a different environment, 'cause we have the physicians and the parking and the surgical suite, et cetera, at our disposal. Even there, a lot of these patients are turned away. Uh, and what typically happens with, uh, P D S practices are, are specialty really focused on two things, young fearful children, and those special needs that a general dentist, a general practitioner do not feel comfortable treating. This practice has been unique, especially in the last forty years, the two previous partners...
Last, last how many years?
Forty years.
Forty?
So Stephen Proman and Michael Coeden, um, transitioned previous P D dentists in June, and they were foc, their focus was essentially on treating patients through and through their lifetime, so that someone with disabilities all of a sudden hits age eighteen and doesn't get kicked out of the practice and goes to a teaching institution that who may even still turn them away. And I experienced that from, on a daily basis, that I have patients that are eighty-five, I have patients that are sixty-six. I got a phone call one day morning, a sixty-five-year-old patient passed away, and he was on our books. It is a very unusual thing for P D dentists to come across, 'cause we're dealing with a lot of young children that may not pass, and explain. Uh, the idea behind this design is kind of a threefold. The rear area, which is farthest from the main reception area, quote-unquote, waiting room, is for our adult patients. And I'll give you a couple of stories. I had a patient that was referred from a, a mutual friend line, and they actually came from Lexington, and a very fearful child, and came and referred a child of two physicians, and still do the same, remember? I, I had a good interaction with her, we're on board with the treatment plan, and then she and her father went to the reception area while I was chatting with Ma, 'cause she wanted to make sure the, the conversations were not being heard by the child. She came running crying, and she stated, there's a man in the waiting room without an eye. So I said, okay, let me figure out this one up, and indeed, we had a gentleman, fifty-five years old, uh, a psychiatric patient that was missing eye, but that eye match. That is not a comfortable, uh, and child conducive environment to be sharing that space. So the idea behind the waiting room up front here versus the waiting room here is that those patients that need, um, additional access, a larger room because they're wheelchair-bound, uh, or perhaps it's not a good idea to have a two-year-old fearful child that's crying as they're walking to the door next to someone that's screaming and kicking and, uh, giving us a hard time, and the group home. So that's the surgical suite that I have there, which is a larger room to make it comfortable for those patients, and to have a waiting room area and the means to alert the reception, uh, main reception desk that they're here. And typically, any, any given day, um, ten a.m. to one p.m., we take our lunch at one to two, I will see about ninety percent of our patients are adults with disabilities, and they come from group homes with caretakers, as well as, uh, sometimes, uh, parlay. This area is designed for young children, and it faces our neighbors, uh, Rosen Hall, because, as you mentioned last night, beautiful Christmas decorations, et cetera. What I'm envisioning in that area is a child-friendly space, right? That's the whole idea behind open bay, when any of you go to your dentist, I'm sure you're not rubbing shoulders against another grown-up, but there is a concept of modeling and making children more comfortable in an open space where we have other peers that are, you know, getting their teeth cleaned, et cetera. Uh, and my hope is that this will also not only have a more open environment, but have a view of what's at Paul and Rose's property, as well as, uh, landscaping that's gonna have windows that shows that.
I might go just like, uh, privacy would, you know?
Yeah, so privacy, et cetera, there's security lines, et cetera, then there will be, uh, current hedges, and we had talked about having taller trees and et cetera to provide privacy, but this is the main thrufare here, this is the parking lot here, and that's the neighborhood of Rosen Hall, and they are shared driveways, so, uh, absolutely, privacy is needed, you know, that, that'll be provided. Uh, and this area is for our adolescent patients, uh, so, uh, those that are getting ortho, ortho treatment, those that, um, may come to appointment for ten, fifteen minutes, and that's majority of the patients that are in teen years that are getting braces, oftentimes they come alone from school with their backpacks. So the, the thought, the thought behind this was that they have access to check in, not have to meander through a busy area, and if you ever come by our office and you're bored, welcome to. Afternoons are chaotic.
I live nearby, so.
Yeah, anytime, you're welcome at any time. So giving them a look, not quite quote-unquote privacy, but a ease of access, and then receive the care that they need. The center area is where, so the common things that majority of our patients will need will be placed, as far as what our, my employees, my key members have to do, which would be imaging, which is where pan and set machines are, also central sterilization, all our equipment needs to be inspected and sterilized, so they all belong here. Currently, that space is kept as a space where patient care is being done. We, we abide by all the rules, by OSHA and, you know, CDC. However, the way it is done, we are perhaps at a higher risk for a body instrument that gets left behind, or something else that happens there. So we are trying to make it, and the best way I try to explain to our neighbors here and to designer, et cetera, we have a very limited capacity in this space. You know, we have, we currently have about 4,200 active patients. And a dental office definition of an active patient is someone that's been in the office in the last 18 years. And, you know, one of the numbers we found out was that about half or more of them come from a very close neighborhood. And we're 2,000 square foot space that has, it is a converted home, so we have closets and a very narrow hallway, and our hallways are lined with acrylic covers, because wheelchairs and everything would scuff the area, and it would be a day until the walls come down. So the point I'm trying to make is, we, we are functioning, we're trying our best to provide quality care, and, you know, our reputation shows that. But we're trying to make it, one, more convenient for our patients, two, more accessible for our patients, so that you can provide access to care for these adults and children, and then, two, ultimately, be able to have, have a more pleasant visit.
So Chairman, I just have two questions.
Yes.
I have a few questions, but yeah, I can tell you.
John, why don't you come down this end, where Mr. Callen is?
I want to talk about the ramp. What's the difference in elevation between the ground and the floor? Are you using the rule of about one inch to the foot?
Correct.
How long is a ramp gonna be? What's your opinion of, is it gonna be closed or open? Do you answer some of that?
Sure. So Dr. Park is doing enough work on this building that the entire building has to be accessible. Right, so he's doing more than 30%. So anything new that is done on the building has to be accessible, including the entries. And so the ramp, to answer your question, it's just below 30 inches, the total rise.
Elevation on the ground?
Correct, correct, just, just below 30 inches. So, so because it has to be one in 12, the length of the total ramp is just below 30 feet.
30 feet?
Correct.
Which you would have to have a class, but after that, then...
You got it, exactly. So in fact, on, on the drawing, you say, in order to make it fit, you got really lucky that it fits. Next to the existing entry with these steps is that first landing, then you rise up the ramp, and then there's the landing at the top. Something else that works really well with this, and I think it's fair to mention, when, when, when this work will happen on the project, Dr. Park will still need to service patients, right? So the concept is that he will be working here in his offices while this work is done. So this existing door will still be used exactly as it is today, for patients to enter and exit. Then when this work is, is complete, this will then serve as the accessible entrance on the front. And as you may know, it's not really good practice to have the accessible entrance only at the back.
So what material is, looks like family you're gonna use?
Yes, concrete.
Concrete, okay, is it gonna be enclosed or?
Open. But we, we had a clever idea, which was Dr. Park's idea.
He did concrete?
He, he did concrete?
Did you say?
We could, we haven't talked about that. I, I assume Dr. Park had me out there with a...
What was his idea?
Well, I think you have to tell them there's an overhang.
Thank you very much. It, it is covered. It is covered, it's not enclosed, but it is covered with...
Over the top, but it's not enclosed.
Correct.
So the smoke, you can, yes.
No, no, there's an overhang.
No, it's not, it's still... It could, it could win, for sure.
But what was his clever idea? I'm still anxious to find out.
Something that Dr. Park mentioned to me, which I think is a really great idea, a memory that he has as a child, many of his memories involve biking, being on bikes, whether it was dirt bikes or whatnot, I'm not exactly sure, but that's something that as a person who serves kids, that he wanted to bring to his practice, as a way to make the experience a little bit more comfortable again. So something that you may have noticed on the ramp, we had an idea to, to make something of the ramp and of the railing, and suggest something that could be kind of fun, that the kids would say, oh, we're going to the dentist, the place with the bikes, something with that idea. It may not end up being exactly looking like this, there might be some feedback from the neighbors, I suspect, but the intent was to try and marry an idea from Dr. Park's childhood, as well as a general theme of encouraging bike riders to come use, to, to, to come to the office by bike, which we think is a really nice thing as well.
Well, Mr. Park, I feel you have a great layout, and I just wanted, I don't know, right, because I feel I was doing it myself.
I've, I've been on the construction for the last week, so I almost can relate.
Whoa, you had a couple of questions?
Yes, I just wanna know what's going on on the second floor of the existing building? What exactly is happening up there?
Currently, or?
Well, in the future, because you have to bring everything up to code, so what are you doing upstairs?
Yeah, so I mean, upstairs right now is vacant, and then upstairs, previously, some of the, actually, everyone in the office took lunch on the first floor, and any nothing anything could find. There was no good, good break room, per se. So because, and I no longer have a head in there, so I'm having everyone there use the kitchen as a break room, and sometimes our office meeting rooms. And majority of the other bedrooms are...
But it's still, it's still an apartment layout.
Apartment layout is still...
Nothing has changed, there is still...
Nothing has changed there, yeah.
Are you willing to change anything?
No, no real classes, so.
The, the only thing we, we will probably have to update is to make, is to improve the stair, so that it's, it's at least accessible, in terms of handrails and stuff.
I have a couple of questions, and that...
Go ahead.
So how many employees do you have?
I have a total of...
What's the, 3,000?
Four, the rest of the staff. So I've got three, well, soon to be two doctors that are employees, and I have support staff that are...
The two doctors are the ones you described that come in?
Yeah.
Just, okay, and then I have, just trying to come in, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Staff member, office.
So you're asking 10 people, including yourself?
That's correct.
To park offsite? Where do those 10 people park?
So about half of them live locally, so actually, many of them walk or take public transportation. Three of them live in Salem, so quite often they walk, and then, you know, park, park in the area.
Is it, is handicap, I mean, one of the parkings for wheelchair or handicap, like a van?
That's a very good point, actually.
Yeah, because especially on the back one, so where are you gonna be holding, unloading?
Yeah, no, that's, that's true. So we, we have not reserved a spot for, for man access.
If you have 10, I think there was something that sort of got skipped over, that some members may know. There was an allusion to the Architectural Barrier Board regulations, what determines when one must make an existing structure handicap accessible. Because when they adopted the Architectural Barriers Code, most of the buildings in the Commonwealth existed, so going forward, they adopted a format.
Right.
And that's what the architect alluded to, which was, it's a percentage of expenditure based on the assessed value for the previous five years, and if you exceed that percentage in what you propose, then you must make the entire bill, and am I stating it correctly? You gotta make it handicap accessible.
Yeah, but ADA accessible, I mean, just the ADA, well, I think it's our duty here to evaluate the parking that's needed for this space. So if you need a, an handicap parking space, which takes half a space...
You don't, if you have 10 or more spaces, you need to have one handicap, so we don't have 10 on site.
Right, I understand that one will also take one of the spaces.
But the other part of it is, and I, I addressed that too, the other part of it, as I understood it, when you told me, Dr., is that he told me that people come by the ride, or they come by, people who are...
So how you load it? Does it change?
They get, they get delivered to the site, as I understood it.
So I, I believe that the chart that dictates how many parking spaces per, per lot, per number in the lot, if you're less than 10, I have to go by the memory, but I believe if it's less than 10, you're not required to have a handicap spot.
Right, that's my understanding.
I believe, but I'm going for it.
But putting that aside, and they're telling you how people get there, how people get there, there are people who get there delivered by a van.
May I just, just explain, the, the way that it currently works, and what I think continue to work, is that many of them do arrive by the van.
Yep.
And so this, this side entry is actually really well-used and well-situated. As the van comes into the driveway, the door opens, the ramp goes down, and a person comes out and goes directly in the side of the building. So that was part of, that the, the buildings have always worked that way, and that that's how those patients come. So we, even though we're doing the ramp here at the front, it is most likely that those patients who ride by van or by service would still use that. We will get back to you about any further if the van spot is required.
Okay, but I, I think myself, we should have at least one, maybe two, I can space for a hand here.
That's, that's like your whole, you have your focus there, your service needs.
That's a very good point, and I think we might actually get lucky in that, one, one thing that we're doing here at the back, there's some one-story pieces of the building that were added, sort of ad hoc at the back. And to be honest, not really moving the space. So we're, we're gonna take that back corner off, and I wonder if we might be able to use that to make the van spot. Now, it's currently a dumpster site.
Well, that's the other thing. Where are you gonna put it?
Where's the dumpster gonna go?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll have to look at that, maybe that the dumpster goes back here in that back spot. There's a lot of hardtop back here, actually, I think it's an old garage, probably.
Right, it was a foundation of a garage.
So maybe that's best used as, as for the dumpster.
Now, someone asked a question that I wanted to ask, and I didn't really hear the answer. How many staff members are you gonna have that have to find a place to park on the streets?
Total, eventually? I mean, it varies from day to day. So I've got seven employees in addition to the two doctors that work on a limited basis in a month.
So you have seven that will be there every day?
For the most part. Some of them are part-time, some of the seven are part-time.
But they all have to find a place to park on the street?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
Or come by other meetings, so the, you can have them live locally.
Yeah, I mean, I, I love those three, I can name four.
Where do you live, son?
Cambridge. Cambridge, I drive in, Cambridge.
What's the percentage of people, like you said, that are watching this?
We gave you a chart that these guys, I think there's a map that shows this, let me just, we have a radius map, yeah, over here. So why don't we bring it down this end?
These are the patients.
Like you've got 2,300 patients, they, they all come at different times.
So at a total of 50% of, of all of Dr. Park's patients are within walking distance.
Oh, that's, that's quite a percentage.
It's a lot.
And we did an analysis by, you went back 18 months, got the names of the patients, got their addresses, got their zip codes, and then they came up with this program.
It's a good research.
Yeah, I mean, if you walk up and down Broad and Lewis Street, you can see plenty of school kids, on the streets with knock signs by the, yeah, so.
It, it's a great example of a local business located in the center of the city, where it's probably not the cheapest place to figure business, it's probably not the easiest place to, to figure business. Dr. Park chose to buy it, and is still serving that same clientele here in the city, so it's really a great point.
Are there any more questions?
I have no more questions.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, both. Any other, anyone else who's in speak in favor? Anyone else who's gonna speak in favor? We'll close the hearing for those in favor, we'll open it for opposition. Is there anyone here in opposition? Please stand up, if you want to address the group.
Good evening.
Name and address.
Rose Gold, 71 Broad Street.
From Paul Queenie at 71 Broad Street.
So, Dr. Park's graduated one of the top medical, one of the top dental schools in the country, and likely could have had his choice of where to practice. And like us, he chose to invest in Lynn. His pediatric dental practice serves many families in Lynn, has a solid reputation for compassionate care of children and adults with special needs. Dr. Park has been instrumental in working with our neighbors and us, the suburbs, in addressing several rat infestations that resulted from tenants of nearby non-owner-occupied multifamily housing leaving trash out. He's been a good neighbor, and he has approached us with this proposal, his solder feedback, and we have given it to him. The question at hand, would a significant expansion of the property, possibly doubling the patient load, have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood? In this current preliminary phase of the design, we are presently opposed to this variance being granted, finding it to be more detrimental than what currently exists. We are interested in reviewing the design as it develops, and furthermore, hearing the CBA's reaction to this plan, including the prospects of enforcing any variance that might possibly be considered. Our major concerns, but are not limited to, are summarized as the following. Elimination of already limited green space in front of the building, the five-foot setback from the front of the lot, and the significant loss of green space on the side lot. Major obstructed views from three abutting properties all the way up to the second floor, 71, 73, and 75 Broad Street, resulting from the height and width of the proposed addition. Increase on-street patient and employee parking in an already congested area, and the potential of increased amounts of neighborhood litter resulting from increased foot traffic. The addition might give this largely residential neighborhood a more commercial appearance, so with those colors, perhaps, too. We asked the CBA if there's, are also any limitations on the size and addition relative to the size of square footage of an existing building, as it mentions 25% since some of the zoning thing. Zoning of this neighborhood allows, as the lawyer has, has stated, for professional practices. However, historically, these have been relatively small practices in owner-occupied buildings. The current preliminary design suggests that the possibility of a much larger practice than has existed in over the past 30-plus years, and possibly not in line with the intention of the, of the original zoning. We are furthermore against switching the property to total commercial, as the variance goes with the property, and that could allow future commercial properties to come in with other means as well.
Well, I think we, I share with Rose our good neighbor, Dr. Park's interest in, in the neighborhood, but it's just, there's not enough information in this design for us to, to go in favor of it, and that's, that's why we have to come out against it. It's a preliminary design, we'd like to see more, more details. This single-story addition comes up to the bottom window of, of, of the second floor, and similarly, we're about 20 feet away, our house, you can see it in this, this picture here, and so we'd be, the bottom of our window sill goes right out about the level of the, of, of the roof. So we are concerned about, you know, just, it's a very large, flat roof to look on, and as I said, it's a preliminary design. What we don't see here yet are, there's gonna be rooftop HVAC units that you often see with, with an addition. So we'd like to see a further developed design that would show if there are any rooftop HVAC units, what would the rooftop look like? Because that's what we look down upon from our sunroom.
Oh, we have a stipulation, and if it's a wide, if it's okay, if it's outside utility type of things, you know, I mean, mostly they put them in the attic anyway.
There's no attic, and that would change the whole design.
This is a, this is a single-story addition that has no attic, it's just a flat roof.
Yeah, but I don't know, I'm only looking for a way to make it work.
I see.
But as far as some spoiling of your view, no one has a way to draw over another person's property.
Okay.
So that's how...
Okay, thank you.
You know, otherwise, years ago, people lived up in the woods, but object everyone living down by one.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's fair, that's good.
So, so we do have concerns and we'd like to hear them, but to me, it's a good fit, they're doing good work for children and they put a handicap ramp in, which is, which is great and I, I hope they enclose the whole thing. So that would be pretty nice to install, I think. If you have any suggestions on the design of this.
Perfect, we do have some more suggestions, if that'd be okay.
Like, like, oh.
Yes, so, so, but we see here, um.
Mind you, he's a, a structural and commercial civil engineer for over thirty years, knows construction and design.
Now, I, what I see, this is a residential neighborhood and the, I, and I, I understand the, the need for handicap ramp, we cannot get past the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements. But with that said, like, I see, I see the bicycles and, and on, on the ramp and the concrete ramp with the steel poles, it gives a commer, commercial feel to it, it almost looks like a daycare center, not a residential practice.
Will you come up and, and listen to what they have to say and consider anything?
Mr. Callen, so, excuse me, excuse me, can I, this is going, getting out of hand here, let's just bring this back. Do, do we wanna have, um, these people list their concerns and then have them address them?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because we're getting, like I said, so.
Well, this is an armpit, this is a high-rise zoning, so this is a one-story building, it could be a five-story.
I just wanted to clarify, I, I, we have gotten some, there's been communication, we have gotten some comments, I'm somewhat surprised. I'm grateful for your willingness to, to consider it, but, but I do wanna clarify two things, and I, I follow myself. I said at the outset purposely, so I want you to know, so I'm gonna call attention to it. There was an attempt to increase the residential units and it was turned down, not by you guys, but in the past. So if you can't increase the residential portion, you come next to a point that was made here, which I wanna clarify. This young lady's talking about, uh, section thirteen point five point one. You are a special view, the Board of Appeals, are a special permit granting authority in specified areas. One of the areas you used to have, but the city council took away, was home occupations, okay? But you still have, and if you read it, um, it says that for a commercial or industrial use, if you were to increase, uh, by more than twenty-five percent, you have to meet the common pocket, which is one reason we have, but this is not, this is a mixed use. If you look at the field code and you look at the land use classifications that the city of Lynn has put on this property, it is a mixed use. It was a really, before nineteen thirty-three, it was a residence. In nineteen thirty-three, it became a professional office and a residence and it is tenanted space. We, we're prepared to give up what is actually the conforming portion of use, which is residential, uh, in return for growing to a commercial class. But I believe that thirteen point five one doesn't apply because this is not a, a property that was primarily used for commercial and industrial purposes. It was a professional office with a residence. We can change, we can maintain that residence at any time. It's, it's, it's there, it's recognized, if you look at the I, the ISB Street records, if you look at the, uh, the taxation and then that brings a question to, is an eight thousand square foot lot in a R five district, which is two stories tall, is that its only possible use and the answer is perhaps? So, yeah, there was a trade-off and the trade-off was to recognize what really has happened in the field of dentistry and what's happened at this particular location. But right now, the records of the city of Lynn classify this property as residential and commercial.
A one-family and professional office?
Yes, but you are asking for the property to be changed into a complete commercial property and to disregard the residential, it's then would make it.
No, I'm willing, we're gonna give, not disregard it, we're going to abandon that use, at which point it would be all commercial. But the section that you're alluding to says that the building is used exclusively, which this building was not and has not been. So if we choose voluntarily, we can choose just as well voluntarily not to give it up. I mean, but we're trying to, as a trade-off, because I think I also said, and I, again, I apologize, I didn't make it clear, one of the things that considered was to go up and, and then, and given what the overall goal was, go out and make lessons. So there are always trade-offs, it wasn't that it wasn't considered or that we are sympathetic to what has been expressed with the neighbors, but it's trying to make a site. None of us here made it a dentist office. In nineteen thirty-three, the city of Lynn gave a permit to a dentist, a dentist office, it's been a dentist office. One dentist, who's retiring at the end of this month, has practiced there for forty years, okay? If he wanted to keep going and keep practicing and Dr. Park wanted to join him, life would go on. But would it be a good fit for the neighborhood, would it be a good fit for the nature of the dental practice and for the clientele? Uh, and what we're trying to do is address what we do think is a true public need in a place that has been, we're not changing it to a dentist office, it's been a dentist office.
Yeah, 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 we understand that. Can, can I make a design suggestion? I know, I know we're running out of time here.
No, no, uh, again, I, I wanted to give them, I wanted to basically focus on what their major issues were.
Sure.
Have a little feedback, and if you know something, if we're not going anywhere, we'll continue it. We'll come back at it in two weeks, if I, I just. Well, I don't know, I wanna hear what they have to say.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate you have, giving both of us the chance to speak. And as, um, Attorney Vitale said, this is an established dental practice, we acknowledge that, we bought our house, there's a dental practice beside us. Um, we, we have great respect for the, the forty-year practice, we have great respect for Dr. Park, and he gave us a tour of his facility. His facility is in need of an upgrade and I support him to have an upgrade of the facility. Where our concern comes from is such a large expansion, it's a forty-four percent increase in the, um, total building area approximately in the first floor area increases by ninety percent. So that's why I asked the board and it, with your expertise and with your support of, uh, Solicitor Lamanna, it, is that, um, uh, there's, there is a section of, of the, um, the, the zoning that talks about a twenty-five, I mean, in addition to a property having a, a limit to twenty-five percent of the floor area. But that, whether or not that's applicable, that'll leave that to you and your, your attorney to help decide that, because this, this is a forty-four percent increase in the total square footage of the building and it's a ninety-five percent increase to the first floor, so we don't object to, to Dr. Park continuing his practice there, upgrading his practice and expanding it, it's just the, the, the size of the expansion is so much more and right now, as, we understand it's a preliminary design, it gives the, it is a residential neighborhood. Whether this building becomes purely commercial or not, it's still located in a residential neighborhood. Our preference would be to still have a residential feel to it, even, so this, this ramp, concrete ramp with, with steel poles, we've seen, um, um,
Here's an example.
Which, we've seen wheelchair ramps in residential areas that have a, a nice, maybe wooden post or.
Right, wood, natural wood.
There's ways to make it look less institutional, commercial.
Is that, can you address the regulations?
Of course. Of course, yeah, so, so there.
That's what makes it.
Sure. Residential.
Excuse me, one question, do you have any other?
Yes.
I wanna get you finished and then.
So, so, the other thing is now, this, um, ramp comes out right to the back edge of the sidewalk.
Thirty feet.
Currently, there is about five feet of limited green space there, the, the, these hedges continue on to this, this edge.
Yeah.
So there is a loss of green space by putting this, by putting this ramp right here, s- the limited green space that already exists is lost. So we are not architects, but we would suggest if this wheelchair ramp could slide down this way.
And we did the measurements.
We done the measurements, but, you know, we'll defer to the architect, but this could be slide down this way, you'd still get a, a wheelchair ramp up into the opening, but you could still preserve some of the green space in, in front of the building, and that's, that's another comment of ours.
And it's actually more practical, because currently, all the, oh, wait, one sec.
May I first add one to you?
Yeah, can we finish her?
I'm looking to see what he plans to do.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I don't think you can be done.
And I think we sent, yes, so we, you can look on.
I can show him here, but. This is what I was talking about.
I, I.
Yeah, if this could just slide this way and the door, the door could slide along with it, so if this could just slide this way, then this space would currently occupied by the ramp, could be, uh, green space.
And we did the square footage and the inch, the, the ratio of one foot per inch, and it does fit. And it's also more practical, because right currently now, the, the VMS come up this driveway and drop the patients off. And if we start the wheelchair ramp there, they can go right up the wheelchair ramp as none of this walkway, these aren't wheelchair accessible, they're steep and the driveways on both sides, the ends are broken.
Yeah, neither of those two driveways are accessible with a wheelchair in the street.
So it shifts completely over and we can keep the five-foot green space that's supplied by law.
They might be able, they might be able to do that, right?
Um, so let me, let me explain a few things.
Yeah, you can carry your hand.
Sure, so when it comes to accessibility, our hands are literally tied in many, many aspects. There are guidelines that we must go by.
Yeah.
For, for example, um, we're, we're lucky, they were just below thirty inches here, if we were up above thirty inches, we would need a guardrail. And, and a guardrail, which would be even higher and would have pickets and we, it would be much more challenging, it would look worse. However, what we've tried to, to maintain here is the minimum, which is a three-foot tall or a, a
Hammer.
A continuous hand drill at three feet, must be continuous.
That's right.
So in our world, you can't make it out of wood.
No.
It's not gonna last a year, it has to be.
Yeah, it has to go behind the end, so.
It has to, exactly, and it has to have one down at eighteen.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. So those two things are, are, are the minimum that were shown, um, here, if you can see, one at three feet and one at, at eighteen. Now, what we do with those posts are up to us, um, and we could perhaps do something where the posts are made out of, out of wood, that is certainly possible. Um, it would be worse for, for maintenance and so on, but we could probably come up with a detail that would be a little bit more residential looking. I, I, I do have to say, so the, the reason why commercial things look the way they do is they get need to help, right? These are things on the streets that need to last, that are not in a home, and there are reasons why.
Detail of that.
Of course.
And then if this, of course, you could, you could add.
Of course, now, in terms of moving the, the ramp, I have to say, um, as an architect, um, sometimes things just work, right? And you, you don't ask why, the fact that the ramp fits perfectly in, in this space is very good for a number of reasons. One, I mentioned the, the phasing that we'll have to do for this project where Dr. Park will be.
But that's not hardship, so, you know, there's other ways.
Of course, but, but I have to, uh, I don't think that giving ten feet of green space towards one neighbor is any better than giving ten feet of space towards another. And such a thing really should be dictated by the design and the way that that works best for the accessible. To, to be honest, this, having the entry here, and let me, let me tell you, this was a very difficult plan to figure out. We have a consultant as well who's helping to, um, figure it out, took a long time to get all these pieces in the right place. If I move the door down, it, it, to be very honest, doesn't work as well.
But it does work.
But it does work.
It does work, we have done the measurement, it does work.
We talked about the inside, no, we talked about the inside too, we looked at how you can move different things and how the keys would go red, the wheelchair, right?
May, may I be very honest, I, I find it a bit out of line for a neighbor to be talking about the design on the inside, but my mind's.
Well, I think, I think.
We, we spoke about the outside only, unfortunately, unfortunately.
Oh, no, our, our, I don't, I don't recall.
Excuse me, excuse me, please, I'm gonna, I really am gonna adjourn this, we're, we're gonna pick it up in two weeks here. Did you have any other, the, the havoc systems, the ramp, the, the floor area issue, did you have any other design, exterior design issues that you?
The landscaping plan, we would like a detailed landscaping plan, given how much green space we are losing and given that you are supposed to have five feet of green space in front of your house as most, if not five to ten or fifteen feet of green space along both the, the cross the street and the side, um.
Well, I have to say, how much space is a one-foot green space on a ramp?
Yes, seven foot six.
What's the percentage?
Oh, uh, I don't know the percentage, I'm afraid, but we have, we have preserved all of that space that, that's in that setback for whatever, whatever they want.
Do you say you have seven percent?
No, it's less.
Um, with, with the back area, it might be, but to be honest, I, I have to do that math.
Okay, well, okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's a few things here, I think maybe we should wrap up, you know.
Yeah, we're not gonna get this done.
There are some other neighbors also, they have.
The dumpster, the parking, the size of the building.
Yeah, I would like to hear from everybody that has been patient enough, uh, to stay here. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this plan?
Uh, yes.
Come on up. Please give your name and address.
My name is Ruth Supper, I live at seventy-three Broad Street.
And I'm Ricardo Supper, same address. Uh, my, my concern is, is simple, I'm retired, uh, have a two-family, uh, my tenant, he parks in the street, I have one parking spot and that goes to the queen, and I park in the street. Over the years, I see that parking is becoming more and more scarce, uh, even during the, and I'm retired and so I can park any time of the day and, and even during the, uh, day hours, I might run an errand and might find it difficult to find a parking spot. So I can only envision things are gonna get a little worse and of course, when people park, uh, they put their cup or their, uh, bottle of water on the ground and they go where they need to go and and so subsequently, the debris and the trash is going to, uh, accumulate. But generally, I've met, uh, Dr. Parks and and, uh, I am very impressed on, on the, what I find individual, he seems to be much, much better than the previous doctors that occupy that building. Uh, so that's my only concern with, with, with parking, uh, and I'm.
My concern is a little more than that, um, what my husband didn't say is that we've been in that property for forty-two years. In fact, our children have attended the dentist, um, it was Cody and Perelman, and they've been there and we met them and we knew them. Um, I am dismayed over the fact that there will be an addition that will face our house, will be very close to our house. It will obstruct our view, we won't be able to see the street very well, we'll be able to see the street, but not as well as, of course, we have. Um, I'm also, um, concerned about the green property, with the grass, the trees. Of course, some of that's gonna be eliminated, it'll have to be with the building of that structure. And so I am very concerned, certainly gonna change our lives and I think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood. And because of that, I oppose this, vehemently oppose it, and just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I think we're good.
Is that it? I can't see.
That's it.
So that, anyone else in, in opposition hearing now, we'll close the hearing, for those in opposition, um, I'm just gonna throw the suggestion out, but potentially we, we continue this to the February fourth meeting. Um, unless people, I just think there's some, some questions and maybe, I don't know, if you guys can get together, um, and have a meeting before the fourth meeting? Before the next meeting?
Before February eighth.
February fourth, you got two weeks, potentially meet with these residents and go over some of their concerns and then we'll, we'll come back here and hash it out on, on February fourth.
You, 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 you probably wanna read some of the concerns?
All right, we'll read the concerns, yeah. So, again. Okay, great, so, again, you know, the exterior, what's it gonna look like? Where are the HVAC units gonna go on the property, are there anything other commercial issues that are gonna pop up on the, on the, on the, uh, expansion? Um, the handicap ramp, uh, potentially looking at conserving any green space in front, uh, landscaping plan. Uh, and parking seems to be a big issue and I don't know whether there, there's, there's a way to lease parking for your staff somewhere in the neighborhood, I don't know, but uh, you know, you know, parking, I would try to look at somehow trying to address the parking issue. Like, I, I went down there today and I walked to the very end of the property, the back, and the, the seventy-one hour, whatever number hour it is, had a car parked right there, you could not access the last four parking spaces. So I said, well, this is obsolete, um, unless, you know, unless that can get straightened out. Um, and, and look at the twenty-five percent floor area as a ceiling, um, CM, that would be, you have to fairly work on that. Um, is there anything else that I?
The dumpster.
That, where's the dumpster and the snow removal?
Yep, um, I think the overall size of it, you know, if there's room for improvement, you know, we certainly talk about that.
you know, we certainly talk about that.
So, so this is an R5, this is a high-rise.
Yeah.
They can go twenty-five percent and then you go five-story up.
Yeah.
People seem to understand that, that you're in a zoning R5. A one-story is a lot better than a five-story.
Cut candy.
They go the, they go twenty-five percent.
But.
Yes. Uh, just think about that. They're not zoned in our home, they're zoned.
I think we're good.
I think we're good. So we will, uh, motion for Floyd to continue seconded. Seconded by Ms. Curley. Please call the roll.
Mr. McQuarrie?
Yes, continue.
Mr. McQuarrie.
Yes.
And, Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
And Mr. Wooten?
Wooten.
Yes.